Hey, Internet land. This is Elliot and this is Blind Partisan Show. Since we're on YouTube and everybody should go and subscribe. You should do that right away before I forget to tell you again at the end. So I am here today talking to another of our awesome candidates for Green Bay City Council. Very exciting. We're probably going to talk about the wheel tax. So I'm here with Debbie.
Jox.
Jox.
Yes.
I put you. You didn't even let me. You didn't even let me fail.
Well, I kind of heard the pause coming in, so I just wanted to make sure we're just gonna push it on through.
All right, take two. I'm just kidding. So you're running for District Eight?
Correct.
Okay, and uh, start me off. What are some of the issues that you think are important right now for City Council?
For City Council, as far as District Eight is concerned, and I think, well, our whole city, it involves says Coburn Pool.
Yeah.
And that has been an ongoing issue as far as getting funding and that type of thing. I have been out campaigning, knocking on doors, talking with people and on my Facebook page, I kind of put some, I took the minutes from the park meeting, two weeks ago, I believe it was. And I mean, to put this pool in, we're talking about seven point, almost eight million, seven point nine million dollars, I think it is. And then they want to bond another 2.5. And they want to turn the current pool into like a 50 meter tournament style pool, which means they'd have to cut down the trees. You know, there's a lot of wildlife over there. There's, it's just such a scenic, beautiful area that um,
So Coburn Pool is in your district?
Yes, correct.
So would where are people's opinions falling on this?
I think, you know, here's, here's, I, that's a good question. I mean, I'm hearing both sides. And when I first heard about it, I mean, I'm very budget conscientious. I mean, you know, like, I am like, I have no credit cards. I have no debt. I am just, you know, that's the way I live and I just don't like paying interest. And when I saw the 2.7 or $5 million, I'm like, that is a lot of money to put into a pool. And then I'm hearing a lot of constituents saying, we don't need that. All I want is our community pool. We want a pool to be able to go to. It's only open less than three months out of the year to spend that kind of money.
Oh, my phrase.
Sorry, but it's, you know, and then I heard, well, maybe we should put a dome over it. Well, that was never, you know, brought up, you know, in the process of meetings. But I get, I understand that these swim, these swim teams have been working so hard. They want this pool. You know, there's a group of Coburn, you know, people that have been working on this. I get it. Where my stance is this, although I have that on my page, it's a lot of money to put out there. But if Green Bay wants to go ahead and put this in and pay the extra money, hey, I'm for that too. I align with representing our district, what my constituents want. And when your question is, what do they really want? I think we need to do a survey and maybe do a referendum on this and put it out there. I don't know if we could get this on the ballot, you know, in a couple of weeks. I didn't think so.
So uh, my opinion, I mean, but I think it's based on, on some fact. If it is put up to the citizens of Green Bay and it is phrased honestly and accurately, it would fail. For the whole city. Now, your district, it could skew a little more in favor of it, but when this was contentiously debated at City Council meeting, I was there. You might've been there too. A lot of the people that were voicing their opinion in favor of it don't even live in the city of Green Bay.
That's correct. One out of the seven swim teams are only from Green Bay, from what I understand. So that's why I put that out there. And I think, you know, we all have budgets to live by and yeah, I would like a Mercedes, but you know, I can only afford, you know, whatever, whatever car I can. I mean, we gotta look at the budget. We need streets repaired. We need, um, you know, we're looking at opening up Bay Beach again, the beach over there. I mean, that would be an awesome amenity to add to our city and tourism dollars and um, you know, um, I guess you're looking at a limited amount or just a specific group of people that really want this pool and a specific people that we would utilize.
But I would be totally in favor of you doing a survey.
I, that's what I'm thinking about doing is typing this up and going out this weekend and surveying homes and um, see what kind of results we can get back.
You know, and the thing about surveys though, of course, you can get whatever results you want by skewing the question. So uh, you know, be, be, be careful with that. I mean, like I would, I would like an honest.
Right.
appraisal, like if people know the facts, what would they actually say?
Right.
Or if you had, if you had to choose between, we can either fix the roads or we can have it, we can have a meat sized pool, not Olympic sized pool. I know, I understand.
It is an Olympic sized pool right now, but what they're talking about is taking the pool and putting these liners in there and readjusting or making it into a larger pool. But I mean, you know, and they're saying that the tourism dollars is going to, um, is going to be a benefit to our community. But I kind of think, you know, you can make anything look good on paper.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
I never buy the, uh, the, the tourism dollar multiples. I, I feel like we, we, we need some amenities. We need some attractions, but those shouldn't really come from like the taxpayers.
Right.
We should be taken care of. I don't know. If I, to me, again, like if I was given a survey, if you ask people, what's the job of city government? Building a swim meet capable pool would probably not be on the list for most people.
Right.
So, uh, all right. So that being said, uh, let's, uh, let's move into the, the other thing that I hear a lot about. Well, I mean, the other two big topics of the, you know, of the time are safety and the, the road situation.
Right. But I just wanted to mention about, you know, because this kind of goes along with it. And on my literature, I have about economic development.
Yeah.
I think one of the things we need to do and why I think we're short on amenities is because we have investors who want to invest into our city. But the problem is when you keep referring it back and referring it back and referring it back. Well, investors tend to get a little impatient and, you know, they're here to make money, not lose money. And as they, um, as an older person, your job is to make educated decisions in a timely frame, not referring it back years. And what I understand, and I've personally heard from developers is that we get more done in other communities than we do with the city of Green Bay. And that's unfortunate. And it's not our mayor's fault. It's the, it's the council that we have right now that keeps referring projects back.
There are two pieces to this. Okay, so um, so the council dysfunction.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what can you do to solve that? If you're elected, what, what can you do to solve that?
Well, I think if we can get um, different council people on our city council, I think, for instance, Brian Johnson, I've worked with Brian Johnson at the Chamber of Commerce. Barb Dorff and I are good friends. I think when you have a relationship that you can, are, is respectful, I think um, you would see a whole different council. If we could get some different perspectives and maybe some council who could act accordingly and respect each other and get things done in a timely manner.
So I think, uh, to be devil's advocate on that.
Sure.
So I think that they do get along in groups. I think there are factions in our city council. So there's that piece, but then there's also what they would say is, well, I don't really care about getting along. I'm here to do the job for my constituents and I'm sticking up for their viewpoints.
Yeah. So I think that's absolutely a good piece. You should be there educating. I mean, if I was city, a city council person, you should be bringing in, you know, what your constituents want, what my constituents want. But the end of the day, I think we collaborate and find what's best for our city and we make a decision on it. You know, I, and I think if you went back to your constituents and said, you know, this is, you know, what has been debated. These are the facts. This is what I think we should do and move forward with it. You're not going to please everybody all the time. But you know, you can just do the best job that you can do and what's best for our city.
So you, you're in favor of faster votes?
Correct.
Up or down? Let's move on.
Um, educated, looking at everything.
We can't enforce that though.
No, but what I'm saying is that, um, you know, if we can get people to work together in a respectful way, I think you're going to get more done at the end of the day than you do have with people arguing and fighting and calling names to each others.
But what, but what can you do, you know, aside from there being, uh, you know, a big turnover where you have new people to work with that are all, you know,
Right.
starting fresh too. What, what do you do if you're, you're the only one that wins? It's not an incumbent. What do you do? Can you do anything?
I guess one of the, my traits and my personality is I am persuasive. I, you know, I am resourceful. I,
That remains to be seen if you're persuasive.
Yeah. I am. Um, you know, um, I do have a sales background, but um, I guess, you know, most importantly, I'm very passionate about our city and I want to see what's, of what's, you know, I want to see our city grow in so many ways. I mean, it's just, you know, we've been stagnant for so long and you know, we have our Green Bay Packers here, which is so incredible, but we could really build and bring in so many other things. And I think um, if we could get the trust back from developers and investors in working with us instead of shunning them away, I think you're going to need some new projects in our city.
Okay, so devil's advocate on that.
Sure.
There is, this is not just a Green Bay criticism. So TIF is used a lot and that's why they have to work with the city in order to, to be able to use TIF.
Right.
Maybe we overuse that, you know, maybe we need to, to cut that and let developers develop instead of having the city determine who the winners and losers are.
Right. Um, I guess that would depend on the project and what it all entailed, you know, you can't just say, well, this, you know, just cut it completely because other communities use that too. You know, to, um, to lure developers and investors.
The original intent of TIF was, you know, back when it was originally created, was to help blighted areas that couldn't get development any other way, could not get funding any other way.
Right.
I really, I don't see any area like that in town at all, in the, in commercial territory anyway, uh, that it wouldn't get developed.
So you're saying it's overused?
I, I feel like, uh, right now, I mean, I, I feel like the proof is in the indecision.
Yeah.
It's overused because like, if we can't, if we, why can't, why don't we just say yes to everything then? If TIF pays for itself, this is something that Randy Scannell says all the time. No, it pays for itself. You don't understand. Okay. Well then let's just say yes to everything, right? Like we, we do need to deliberate. We need to be careful and we need to make really sound choices. And I'm always afraid of governments and less afraid of city government than, you know, Madison or Washington, right? But picking winners and losers makes me afraid.
Okay.
So if we had to vote quick and I was on council, it'd be no.
Well, I'm not saying, I, I'm not saying, okay, we need to make a decision today. What I'm saying is, um, we need to make decisions. You know, it should take you a year to make a decision.
Development.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right. I mean, you know, I mean, I just think that, um, you know, as far as like, you know, raising a family and making decisions in your life, you know, we have to make them all the time. So let's make them. Let's, you know, research what we need to research and let's all get together and make a decision on this and, you know.
Have calculated risks.
Yes, calculated. That's very, that's a good word. Yes.
I don't mean to put words in your mouth, sorry.
No, that was.
I'm supposed to ask questions. You're supposed to have the thing. I'm sorry. I screwed up. So uh, wheel tax. So we have terrible, terrible roads in Green Bay.
We do.
And so that's a combination of a lot of factors. Tell me what your thoughts are on that.
Well, again, I will say out knocking on doors, speaking with people in our district and um, our district has a lot of elderly and um, I am hearing no to the wheel tax, no to the wheel tax. We can't afford it. And when I think it's kind of maybe put to them and a different perspective of, because everyone hears the tax. When we hear tax, we think, oh my God, another tax, another tax. What if we rephrased and called it a wheel fee? Instead, maybe people would be more receptive. But when we're talking about budgets again, I mean, if we can um, take money from projects that are not in our best interest, maybe we use, utilize that money to pour our roads and um, you know, repair them. I am, I am majority on this one, you know, whatever. Um, again, I think this should go to a vote. You know, it just shouldn't be, you know, a council.
Referendum.
It should be a referendum. I do.
I mean, I, I guess that's how I feel. So the, the criticisms of the wheel tax, you probably know these. It's regressive, you know, as poor people who aren't paying any tax really right now, they live in an apartment complex, all of a sudden now they have to pay it on their one or two cars.
Yes.
So it's, it's regressive. Other people say, well, it's based on usage, but if we're going to charge for usage, then are we going to pay for how many steps I take in the park and how often I use the pool like? That's not what taxes are for. Taxes are for shared investments, right? And there's, uh, but the, the special assessment is the problem where now roads don't get repaired because people don't want to get hit with, you know, $2,700 is a figure that I heard from somebody. They don't want to get hit by that fee.
Right.
And I don't either.
And if you lived on my corner, I'd get hit like this road, the front road and the other side three times. So I don't want an assessment either.
And other communities don't have this. So this is a combination of many things, mostly poor planning. Most communities don't have this. Again, if you go to the list, you ask people, hey, what do you think your property taxes pay for with the city? That's a tough one. Police, you'd say, sure, yeah. Garbage, yeah.
Definitely.
Yep. And then fire department, right? Because you know, fire is probably a big, important one when you have one, but everybody doesn't have one every day. But those are the things, right?
Yes.
And then you might say parks and way down on the list, you might say, you know, building a competition pool, building a baseball stadium, things like that.
Right.
Roads are important. I feel like they should come from the general fund, uh, whether that means they're bonded and paid back, but it should be paid through the general fund. We don't need to hit people with special assessments. We need to budget.
Right.
So.
I agree.
Okay, we're done.
That's it. I, I see. I agree with that. I think we should do a referendum on that. And I think.
You're terrible at this.
I, I, no, no, I, you know what? You can't just, you have to listen to your, to your constituents. You need to.
Constituent?
I know, but I'm just saying, what I'm hearing is people don't want to pay a wheel tax. But then I hear, well, how are we going to fix the roads then? Well, you know, there's some other alternatives. Like you said, we bond for it or we look at our budget and say, this is what we need to cut.
So, uh, one thing that I've heard brought up, uh, was that we could do, because we have this budget shortfall, we don't, we're, we're panicking, we don't know, all of a sudden our roads are broken. We didn't know this before. So we should have a wheel tax, but have a sunset clause, have a, have an end date for it. So we're going to do it for a year, five years, whatever the number is. Now I brought that up to Vanya and he's like, that is political posturing. What do you think about that?
I, I, okay, I'm sorry to say this, but when I was reading through the notes and I thought it was going to be something implemented and it wasn't going to be no sunset on it, I thought, hmm, that just doesn't seem like it's going to fit for a lot of people. And I don't know if a lot of people realize that, but once this is implemented, it's going to stay.
Right.
Right?
That's the word tax and whatever, however you disguise it, you know, you can call it the Patriot Act or you can call it the, we're going to listen in on your personal phone calls bill. But people know.
Right.
You can call it a fee. It doesn't matter.
Right. I said fee. Yeah.
And I guess I don't really want to talk specifically because I know it can get politically contentious, but the, um, the safety discussion.
Yes.
You have any thoughts on that?
I do. That's another, um, point I am talking about when I'm out knocking on doors is safety. In our district currently, we don't have a neighborhood association. Well, I guess we do have Western Corridor, which is up in operational and they're doing a fantastic job over there. Coburn Pool area does not have their Neighborhood Association. They have not enough, there's not enough members. And then the Lombardi, which is in my area, uh, they were trying to get it up and running, but apparently it's not. Anyway, so why I'm saying all this is, you know, what, when I'm taking a look at all this, what I would like to do, when I was growing up, we always had the Neighborhood Watch Program. And I would really like to implement that into my district. Um, I know they only do the stickers on the windows now and that type of thing. I really would like to see some signs put up like they used to have. This is a Neighborhood Watch area. I mean, I think that's going to detour anyone trying to break into your house and maybe getting back to the block parties like we used to do.
Going to detour them? Are you going to detour them over to my district?
I'm going to detour right over to you. Sorry.
That's okay. I know what you meant. I, I just like, I just like teasing.
Anyhow, but I just think, you know, we need to get back to neighbors watching out for neighbors and especially with our elderly. I think it's our job as their neighbor to watch out for them and to make sure they're, I don't want to see our elderly not being able to, or being afraid to leave their house because they don't know if someone's going to break in their house while they're gone or they're going to come home to some, you know, because we had, there was a lot of break-ins, um, you know, over the past six months in our district. And um, I think that scared a lot of elderly into just staying in their houses and pulling down the shades and that type of thing.
Similar to the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Not at all.
Uh, this, this is a bad habit. I gotta, I gotta learn to be better. So, uh, back when I was a kid, we had block parties in my parents' neighborhood and, um, like we, we were sort of, uh, I don't want to say the black sheep, but like we were lower income compared to, we were in kind of a wealthy neighborhood. So we always felt a little, you know, weird about it. Everybody had a little more spending money, right? Um, so, but anyway, they put on these big elaborate, uh, neighborhood parties, these block parties, and we had, we lived in a cul-de-sac, so it was like ideal. I don't know if, I think they don't do that anymore. I don't know why. If I were to guess, people don't know how to even get something like that started.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
Because they're like, oh man, I don't know how to get a permit for this. So, I mean, I'm, this is an innovative idea and I think it's great. And I think you should totally run with that, not just in your district. I think we need more of that.
Right.
Similar to what I say about schools, we need to not lock parents out. We need to let the community in. We need to have business leaders there every day walking in. They should be lined up at the door.
Right.
And, and not lock the kids in so that they want to, you know, freak out and do crazy things. We, and we need them to, you know, be kind to each other.
Right. I would like to see the principal or teachers out greeting these kids in the morning and doing.
Right. Like the Walmart readers? I actually said that to Max.
There's nothing wrong with that. You know what?
And you know what? I think, I think it's some of the schools, I think it's some of the schools they do.
Yeah, but I remember when you were a kid and your teacher was outside of her door saying, good morning and giving you a hug.
I think a lot of them do.
How did that make you feel?
I think a lot of them do.
But I am not saying that they don't, but you're right. My son's in high school.
Block party, block party, not schools.
He won't let me walk him in anymore. But I mean.
We're not, I'm not running for school board. You're not running for school board. Maybe we should, but we didn't.
Visual, just a visual, having some, um.
Good to do that.
To, you know, to have a teacher or, you know, unofficial outside, just greeting the kids and doing visual checks, I think is, is a great idea.
Well, so.
And I know they do that at some of the schools and everything, but, um, you know, once you get in high school and stuff, you really don't see that a lot.
Well, so in our community, uh, you know, we all have these things, right?
Right.
And, uh, I held up my phone if you had the camera on here. Um, so people, I, I teach out of GB and, um, I'm no different than anybody else than any of the students. I have my headphones when I'm walking in from my car and I go to class and I don't say, and I don't say anything to anybody unless it's a face I know and I only take my headphones off and I'll say, hey, right? Uh, so like we don't communicate with each other enough. I don't, I don't.
Try that one day though.
Well, I mean, I, I kind of do.
I'm going to make you step out of your comfort zone.
Yeah.
Take those off and I want you to smile at every person you see. Like, hey, have a good day.
This is, this is not working at all. I'm supposed to be grilling you. No, 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 no. I'm just going to say yes. I'm going to do that. You can't prove it.
I'm going to follow up next week.
Good luck with that.
Okay, go ahead.
No, so it's, uh, I don't know. I, I wish there was something more we could do with our, you know, just to bring the community together.
Right.
So I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know exactly what I'm asking for you to do, but I would like for you to streamline that process of block parties.
Yes.
And if it's already streamlined, then like, tell me, tell other people and like, let's spread the word.
I'm going to do a little more investigating on that and I'll go about incorporating that and maybe utilizing the churches in our area. You know, it doesn't have to be, um, I know like they would shut down the streets before and you have it. I mean, you know, to see what type of permits you would need to do that, but, um, just getting neighbors out and getting, you know, let's just stop with labeling people. Let's just stop with, you know, just the hate in this world. I mean, let's just for one day, let's just say, hey, neighbor, what do you need help with? Or, you know, um, when you see someone that's elderly and they need their sidewalk shoveled, don't be like, oh, I'm sure someone will do it. No, take the initiative. Take the initiative and go help. When you see someone's lawn is, is too long, how long does it take to just go over to someone's house and say, hey, you need help mow your lawn today? Or, you know, you never know what's going on in people's worlds. It's just taking the initiative and trying to maybe do something nice for somebody.
Well, I think what you'll realize if you win is that, uh, people don't do that and they're going to call you and they're going to say, this person didn't mow their lawn.
Well.
What would you say to that person?
I would go and find out why they didn't mow their lawn and they needed help with it. And if I could, if they could pay some young man to go and do that, like I said, I'm resourceful. I would, um, maybe they don't have a lawnmower. I would let them borrow my lawnmower. I mean, I'm, my, being a nice person has not gone away. This is just how and who I am. I just, you know.
So, um, the, I guess the, the other issues of, you know, of, of the recent memory, we talked about the pool. What are your thoughts on the Northland Hotel?
I think it's a historical amenity. I really do. And I know all the budgets and with all of that. I would like to see it to be completed. I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, I never realized that all the Packers, that's where they stayed previous, go to the games and all that type of thing. I mean, do you know what a draw that would be to when people come into town to stay at a hotel that the early Packer players stayed at? Maybe, you know, okay, so from my end, because I, you know, because we do rent out, you know, for the Packer games and different events throughout the year. And I do have the opportunity to meet so many people. I mean, I have people from Japan that stayed with us. I mean, the opposing team, 90% of people that stay with us, 90% of them are the opposing team. They are coming into Green Bay to see and to experience Lambeau Field. If they had an opportunity to stay at that hotel downtown, we will definitely get the clientele to fill it up. I have no doubt about that. About that budget and how all that money transcended and this and all of that drama.
So you think it might not pay for itself, the drama?
Oh, I think, I think it will definitely pay for itself, for sure.
Okay.
I mean, that's my take on it. I just wanted to give you a little background from why I'm saying that, but that drama part that happened a year ago and stuff, I don't really didn't.
Yeah, I mean, and some of that was the council's fault. Some of it certainly was not.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of weird stuff going on there.
Right.
So what are your thoughts on the Bullfrogs?
Yeah, that's a sad situation. Um, again, I'm going to refer back to, we need, we need to make decisions in a timely manner and do what's best for our city and, um, not let, we need to embrace investors and treat them with respect. Not yell at them and, you know.
Was there yelling? How about that?
Um, well.
I watch a lot of the city council meetings, but I mean, they're, they're not as riveting as we are right now.
Well, the, the few that I've been at, I just see when the camera's off is just, you know, the disrespect and, um, well, if you want to build into our city, just the requirements, you know, all of a sudden at the last minute, they need to do, you know, you think it's a done deal, then all of a sudden an older person puts something else in there, then it's referred back again. And I mean, as an investor, you don't have that kind of money to just like, you know, throw away to the wind. We just don't. I mean, people don't. And so they find another community that says, hey, we can do that.
Community with better roads.
Well, I don't know about that.
I think Ashwabanon's roads are in better shape than ours.
Yeah, I, I, I drive them. So, yes.
So I think if you fix the roads, I think developers, that, I think that's, that's a piece of the puzzle more than throwing money at them and facilitating all these, these things.
I don't, I, I, I. I don't, I, I, I think, I don't know if the roads, I, it could be, but I think.
We need, they, businesses.
The conversations that I had.
Yeah.
Or what I've heard.
Yeah.
Was. We would love to do business with Green Bay, but it's just so hard to do business with Green Bay.
Yeah. So what do you, what do you, what do your potential constituents say? People that you've been talking to on the street? Have they talked about this at all?
Absolutely. Cause that's one of the things on my, um, door hangers is economic development. And I tell them that we need to embrace investors, welcome them into our city, not chasing them out. And make educated decisions on, you know, the type of developments we want to need here. And not, um, prolonging.
You still have to make choices.
Correct.
And, and, um, and make, and have a good deal for the city.
Right. Exactly. That's exactly.
So I think that, I think that, but I think that that's where the disagreement comes in.
Right. And as far as the bullfrogs and them leaving, yeah, I, I think, you know, that was huge for our city. That could have been such an amenity. And, you know, but it's not, it's not, you know, a, a dead deal. I mean, there's definitely other things that we can look at and doing down there. And making that, um, you know, a beautiful area. For people to continually want to develop.
I would like something to get done. I don't much care if it's that or something else.
Right.
Cause again, like I feel like that about the same as I do about the pool. We keep building these things that are used in the summertime and we do not have a lot of summertime here.
Yes.
And we love summer. It's evident by all the things we want to build for summer, but like, come on guys, we have a lot of winter.
Yes.
So.
But the way it was kind of, um, the development of was, you know, the bullfrogs there and the soccer team and. You know, having Anducies down there and having, you know.
A lot of things were penciled in that I don't know. I don't know how, how firm any of that stuff was. And I think.
Right. I think there's a lot of contingencies on some things.
So I think, so there again, I, I, you know, I think that a lot of the blame lays on the council, I think, but I think there were, there were a lot of moving parts there too. Yeah.
Right.
So anything else you want to, you want to leave everybody with?
I would just like this. What?
When should they vote?
April 3rd. I would just like to say, I would be honored and, you know, if we keep doing the same things. The same way, we're going to get the same results. And I think it's time for a change for our city. And I'm not saying, you know, that, um. You know, we need to take this, this sole progressive type approach, but what I'm saying is we need to start doing something different and making small changes into big changes. And, um, we need to all start working together, be progressive and respectful of each other. And I'd be honored for your vote on April 3rd to be the new elder person. Oh, sorry. I would be honored to.
I can't vote for you.
You can't?
I can't.
No, I'm kidding. I know you're not in my district, but I would be honored to be the new elder person for District Eight come April 3rd. All I'm asking is for a chance.
So if anybody wants, uh, to learn more about you or get in contact with you, oh, should they best do that?
I am on Facebook. I have a political page on Facebook. And I'm going to be putting a meet and greet out within the next week for coffee at our Packer, um, duplex. So I'll have more information on our website about that, but, um, pretty much Facebook is, um, my contact. Otherwise under the lights of Lambo's on Facebook, which is our business and I have my personal page on Facebook too. So if you want to contact me. Meet for coffee. You have questions, concerns, or maybe an idea you'd like to share. Love to hear it.
Cool. All right. That wraps it up with Debbie Jocks.
Thanks Elliot.
Right? I got it right?
You did.
See? You just didn't give me a chance before. All right. So April 3rd, District Eight. If you would be so kind, if you are still listening, you should totally go to YouTube and hit the subscribe button. You should totally go and subscribe on iTunes. You can reach all these things by going to blindpartisan.com. You should also join me in the Blind Partisan group on Facebook where you can tell me how stupid I am and how smart all my guests are. That's all I got. Bye.